Sixteenth supplementary proclamation dated November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, suspending Hawaii revised statute of chapter ninety-two, public agency meetings and records. To the extent necessary to enable boards as defined in section ninety-two dash two to conduct meetings without any board members or members of the public physically present in the same location, among other things. The Board of Education will be holding virtual meetings until further notice. The public can still call in or log on to listen to board meetings live. A live broadcast is audio only for both board members and the public. Video of the board members and any presenters will not be broadcast. An image of the agenda will be shared on the screen. This is to reduce the amount of bandwidth that this meeting takes up and to provide and to preserve the quality of the audio. Board members, a couple of housekeeping reminders. Make sure to raise your hands in WebEx to participate in the discussion and wait to be called on before speaking. Mute yourselves when you're not speaking and unmute yourselves when you're called on. State your title and name when you participate so members of the public know which board meeting is a board member is speaking. Put your hands down after you're done speaking. If you lose connection or experience any technical difficulties during the meeting, contact board staff immediately. This meeting is then now called to order as of eleven oh two. We will now accept public testimony on committee agenda items. Members of the public who signed up to testify, you must be logged on to WebEx using the same name you used to sign up for testimony. Board staff will call on you in order in the order in which you signed up to present all our testimony. Board staff will unmute your mic. Please test your speakers and microphone before your name is called to ensure they're working, they are working. Instructions on how to do so can be found on the board website. If you're not audible because of technical issues, you'll be muted and the next testifier will be called. Testifiers will have a four-minute time limit. State your name, organization, if applicable, and agenda item you are testifying on. The chime will sound when you have thirty seconds left and a second chime when your testimony time expires. You will be automatically muted once you allow the time for testimony expires. Gina, do we have any testifiers today?
Yes, we do, Fig Chair. I have Angel Ramos, followed by Representative Capella, then Chris Caulfield. Angel Ramos, can you hear me? Calling on Angel Ramos. Angel, can you hear me?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you. Uh, my name is Dr. Angel Ramos. I am deaf and was formerly principal of the Hawaii School for the Deaf and the Blind. In August of two thousand and nineteen, I was removed as principal of HSTP and transferred to a hearing school with an interpreter. HSTP had agreed that on my behalf, I've gone through the grievance process. Now, the reason I'm speaking to you during this final meeting is because I'm currently in the arbitration state. Our superintendent, Kiki Motto, has refused arbitration. It's been six months since she refused arbitration. During those six months, DOE has spent sixty thousand dollars for my interpreter and another sixty thousand dollars for the hearing principal at the school for the deaf and blind. That's one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Each month arbitration is not held, DOE has to pay twenty thousand dollars for an interpreter. In fact, since my removal, DOE has spent over three hundred thousand dollars. My question to all of you is, how can we justify cutting school budgets twenty percent while wasting money? Over three hundred has been wasted on interpreters, money that could be better used to pay for teacher positions or provide students with much-needed supplies. Refusing arbitration doesn't make sense. A six-month so far. Before you decide to cut the school budget by twenty percent, you need to first look at where the funds are being wasted and misuse. You cannot expect teachers and parents to accept a twenty percent budget cut when DOE continues to waste money. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you and have a good day and stay safe.
Hawaii State House Representative Jeannie Capella, Hawaii Island, District Five, Na'alehu, Ocean View, Captain Cook, Kiala Ke'kua, Kailua Kona. Representative Capella, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. Aloha, everyone. My name is Janee Capella, State Representative for House District Five on the big island of Hawaii. I'm testifying today on the DOE's two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three operating budget proposal. I was recently appointed to serve as the vice chair for the House Education Committee for the upcoming legislative session, and I want to speak to you about my concerns regarding the budget cuts being proposed by DOE. To begin, I do understand that the board is obligated to put forward a budget proposal that comports with Governor Ege's proposed restrictions, which call for significant cuts to government services and potential furloughs. As a state representative, though, and as the education committee's incoming vice chair, I believe that it is my responsibility to prevent these draconian cuts from happening. We can come up with the revenue that we need in order to address the economic crisis without harming our schools or our Keke's future. What's before you today would create educational chaos. A one-hundred-million-dollar cut to Hawaii's weighted student formula could result in the loss of over one thousand teacher positions at a time when we're just beginning to address our state's teacher shortage. A twenty-five-million-dollar cut to special education programs would jeopardize critical staffing, support staffing and support for our school system's most vulnerable students. A four-million-dollar cut to school-based behavioral health services would disrupt the emotional and like and psychological assistance upon which highly traumatized students depend. Before becoming a legislator, I worked with as a victim service provider for survivors of sex trafficking. These survivors cannot function in our schools without adequate trauma care. The list goes on, and I hope that the BOE will take a hard look at the proposal before you and consider what's best for our teachers and our children. No matter what proposal you pass, however, I do promise to be an eager partner with you in resolving the department's fiscal dilemma. These cuts are not inevitable. Whether it's by floating additional bonds to to raise operating funds, closing unfair tax loopholes, temporarily suspending certain state payments and tax exemptions, or asking our state's highest earners to pay just a little more to deliver the schools that our Keke deserve, we have an opportunity to create structural changes that sustain rather than undermine the quality of our education and our learning system. We cannot afford to take a sledgehammer to education funding. Instead, we must work together to fix our fiscal problems in a way that allow our children to continue reaching for the stars. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today.
Chris Caulfield, followed by Susan Piccola Davis. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Aloha, I'm Chris Caulfield, Executive Director of Yumuwa Alliance and the Chairperson of the Democratic Party of Hawaii's Education Caucus. I'm testifying today on the DOE's two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three operating budget proposal as well. Austerity economics is fatal across the world. When policies predicated on austerity have been put forward, people suffer. Services on which working families rely evaporate, leaving vulnerable people to struggle alone. Inequality worsens. Ultimately, the financial recovery that we're so delicately trying to craft is undermined as austerity leads to lengthier and deeper recessions. The same is true when it comes to education. The budget cuts proposed by the DOE would jeopardize the ability of our school system to function and imperil the academic future of our Keke. A one-hundred-million-dollar cut to Hawaii's weighted student formula could prompt the loss of a thousand teaching positions, according to HSTA, which would lead to drastically bloated class sizes, less individuated attention for at-risk students, and overall reduction in the quality of our state's instructional delivery. A twenty-five-million-dollar decrease in special education funding would cause massive staffing shortages and endanger our school's ability to provide a free and appropriate education to high-need students. That problem would only be worsened by the suggested cuts to behavioral analysis and school-based behavioral health services, which provide essential care for special needs, emotionally vulnerable, abused, disadvantaged, and highly traumatized children. While not totalizing the large dollar amount, the proposed athletics reductions include restrictions to gender equity funding. The department's inability to ensure gender equity in athletics facilities reached a point recently at which it had become a legal matter, which spurred the department to finally take action. Even small cuts to gender equity funding will further institutionalize discrimination against girls and gender nonconforming students. While the board is required to follow Governor Ege's budgetary guidelines, it's important to understand that these guidelines are not gospel. State lawmakers can protect our school system this year by increasing corporate and higher earner income taxes, closing excise tax loopholes, granting the governor the authority to issue bond sales, temporarily repealing excise tax exemptions, and doing even more to close the projected budget deficit. And I hope that this board will adopt proactive policy positions in support of those and other revenue-generating efforts so that you can be involved in helping to close the budget shortfall in a manner that doesn't ensures that our our schools and our Keke won't be harmed. Let's let's not allow our children's future to become a casualty of COVID-nineteen. In the coming months, instead, let's unite to find a way to protect our schools from financial ruin. Mahalo for the opportunity to speak.
Susan Piccola Davis, followed by Sheri Nakamura, Justin Huey. Susan, can you hear me? Susan Piccola Davis, can you hear me? Final call for Susan Piccola Davis. Sheri Nakamura? Sheri, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Sheri, mahalo. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Uemura and members of the committee. My name is Sheri Nakamura, Director of HEI Coalition. I'm commenting today on action item three C. As a coalition supporting quality public education, we absolutely advocate for full funding for our education system. However, COVID-nineteen has created an unprecedented situation, and budget reductions appear to be unavoidable. If reductions must be made, we agree with the department's first framework principle of protecting our core mission of teaching and learning, which to us means prioritizing basic foundational curriculum, instruction, assessment, and differentiated instruction in the classroom. Additionally, as we commented at the last Human Resources Committee meeting, we urged the board to insist that the department provide more granular financial transparency, particularly for school-based budgeting. The department in its memo presented a comprehensive report of the financial situation and proposed state-level reductions. However, we still do not know what the reductions and impact will be at the school level. Stakeholders should know specifically how budget reductions will directly impact our students. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Justin Huey, can you hear me? Final call for Justin Huey. Gay Kong, followed by Julie Reese Oda, Linda Elento. Jay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes, I can. Mahalo, proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Uemura and members of the Board of Education. My name is Gay Kong, and I am the principal of Kaolu Elementary School. And today I'd like to testify on the DOE's protocol for the operating budget two, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. As I said, I'm the principal of Kaolu. It's a very tiny school located in Kaolu Hills, and I'm testifying because I really want the board members to see or a better picture what it looks like at the school level when we make these types of cuts. These recent cuts that I see can be best described as crippling, especially for our small school. To balance the WSF budget, we will need to cut two teacher positions, and the end result will leave us with four teachers to serve seven grade levels. Yet still with those severe cuts, we will not have funds left over for instructional materials, sanitation supplies, or even toilet paper. And it might seem a bit strange that we may need to ask our parents to bring in cleaning supplies and toilet paper as part of their child supply list. Our sped budget is no less severe. We'll cut two educational aid positions, which leaves us with two EAs to cover grades preschool through grade six. For our sped teachers, we will have one sped teacher to serve grades K through six and one sped teacher to serve the preschool population. Again, even with making these adjustments and reducing the positions, we will fall short seventy thousand dollars to balance our budget. A district has offered to help us with the deficit, but they also have reduced funds and may not be able to cover the full deficit. And given that we take care of the preschool students from many schools outside of our school geographic area, it is critical that our preschool does remain open. At this point, you may have asked, have we looked at other areas in which we can make cuts besides the classroom teachers? And let me show you a summary of what's left of the classified. We have a half-time health aide, which is critical in the time of COVID, two custodians that now carry on the extra duties, a continuous sanitation of student classrooms, and also the entire building that houses our district personnel. We have one Sasa, which everyone knows you cannot do without in a school, and one office clerk who also serves as our meal count clerk as well. We do have three non-classroom teachers currently. We will lose the academic coach because of the budget cuts as well. That's besides the two teaching positions. All of our non-classroom teachers hold two positions. One is a half-time librarian and a half-time student support coordinator. Our counselor also is our web coordinator, and our academic coach currently is our EL teacher, but as I said, she will that position will be cut. And just speaking of myself, I act as the tech coordinator. I'm the Title I coordinator. I'm the grab-and-go runner. I'm the recess monitor, and I'm soon to take on the role of the academic coach. So all of these cuts are going to be quite devastating, and I hope that I painted for you a clearer picture of what it looks like on the ground level. Thank you for your time and listening to what I have to say.
Linda Elento.
Can you hear me?
Linda, you sound quite soft. Can you increase your volume, please?
I will try. I don't know how.
That sounds a little better. Linda?
I'm talking to Sydney.
It's really soft.
Try me again one more time.
That's better. Your testimony time begins now.
Oh, really? Okay, good morning. This is Linda Elento. I am a parent, and I do have a nineteen-year-old who has disabilities, and I wanted to share the topic of the operating expenses. I did read about an article yesterday regarding a possible nine percent cut in special education, and I'm here to give you an idea of what has happened, at least for my son, over the last nineteen years, where he's not had equal access to an education based on his needs. It hasn't been until the last year and a half to two years, actually almost two years, where the school's been able to start providing him the supports he needs due to his disability in order to protect his civil rights and not be discriminated against anymore, such as being able to go on a field trip like everybody else, where he'd been denied in the past. What I'm bringing up is even just going to the SEAC meetings, the Special Education Advisory Council. I'd heard about different financial policies that have increased special education teachers in our system, and I would hate to see them go because it's taken years to be able to build up the capacity, and I wanted you to know that there's still room for a need for more teachers. My son cannot do without his behavioral aid, and basically that person is filling in for a majority of the time that a special ed teacher would probably primarily do. So I'd like to, in closing, I'd like to share one of the articles that I recently wrote that would show that this easily will become a legal battle if the services are denying our kids with disabilities their civil rights and equal opportunity. Beyond the special education IDA law, we definitely have the civil rights based on section five oh four and ADA for their rights. Anyway, their article is found at legalaidhawaii.org/legal-aid-impact. I hope you'll find it. There's an article, you can search my son, Jason Elento. I was very proud to write the article, but having to go to Legal Aid in order for my son to be able to access going to the annual conference of students across the state, it was definitely the biggest, I guess, accomplishment that has happened with both with the school, the district, and my son. So I really appreciate your listening, and finances, I know, are a big deal in how you're making the decisions, but it definitely would negatively impact. And the COVID impact alone has allowed parents to be able to meet with the school they're having to determine in the near future if they need to make up services. So we've got to consider that as well. Thank you very much.
Fig Chair Uemura, that concludes our oral testimony.
Gina, I had one more request, a late request for testimony from Cory Rosenlee. If he's available, I would invite him to testify.
Mahalo, Fig Chair. One moment, please. Cory Rosenlee. Cory, can you hear me?
Can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Gina?
Yes, Cory. Please proceed.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you, Chair Uemura, for letting me speak. Cory Rosenlee, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. First of all, I just want to say that HSTA recognizes the difficult economic situation that the state is currently in and that the Department of Education faces. But one of the things that's so important as we go forward is, is that as we are going into the legislative session next month, it is very important that legislators hear the actual ramifications of potential cuts in order to give them an opportunity to mitigate them. Right now, it seems innocuous that the two cuts that are the greatest in the DOE-proposed budget is ten percent to the weighted student formula and nine percent to special education. Those two cuts, because most of that funding is actually to fund personnel, is our estimation is that could actually lead to over a thousand teaching positions be eliminated, and that does not count all of our educational assistants, cafeteria workers, and security guards that also could be impacted. By the end of this month, principals have to put together their academic and financial plans, and as part of those plans, they will be suggesting the actual cuts that are needed to take place. We're asking the DOE and the BOE to aggregate this information and to be able to share that with the legislature. On top of that, to be asking for what types of specific programs will be cut. By our estimation, things such as art, music, Hawaiian studies, PE will be cut along with advanced placement and other electives. At the same time, it is very important to know how this will impact class sizes as well. With that, there are some cuts that we can support. The eight-million-dollar cut to student transportation actually will allow us to move some school opening times to later in the day and to use fewer bus routes. We actually support this. It would be good, we've seen already in the research, is that student outcomes improve actually when we start schools later in the day, and this may be an area where we actually see an increase in student outcomes by doing this option. Another thing that we need to look at is the reduction in utility costs. This is something that we should try to do anyway, and as we have come before this board, if more teachers were allowed to tell a work that would cut down utility usage that's being used even right right now. There are other things that the DOE and BOE should look at. One of the things that this board has often supported is the potential amount of money that can be brought in by Act one fifty-five to be able to use underutilized property. It may look that in the past, we've looked at leasing this property. It may require statutory changes, but we should potentially look at whether some of these underutilized properties could be sold to make up for this current spending gap. Another area that we'd like to request more information about is how much money is currently spent on standardized testing at both the school and at the state level. We have some seen some estimates that over multi-year contracts, this could potentially be up to sixty million dollars. We've already seen the potential of suspending it, heard from current Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, and hopefully under the new Secretary of Education as well. One other area that may need to be considered is pausing new state construction this year as we see if we can potentially use that money as well. So we know that this is a very difficult situation, but during this time, it's very important that there is transparency about the actual ramifications, and we hope to work with the Board of Education and the legislature to try to mitigate the cuts that will happen to education this year. Thank you so very much.
Fig Chair, I believe that concludes oral testimony.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you to all the testifiers. Listen, we have also received written testimony, which is publicly posted on the board's website. Since there is no more public testimony, we will now move on to the action items on our agenda, starting with action on the Department of Education repair and maintenance priority list in accordance with Board Policy three oh one dash ten, entitled Equitable Allocation of Facilities Resources. The memorandum with the recommendation is in the meeting materials, so I'd like to refer you to that. We also have Randy Tanaka, Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Facilities Operations, here to answer any questions. Before we start discussing the agenda item, I'd like to again remind committee members to raise your hands in WebEx and wait for me to call on you before I'm muting your mic at the phone. When you're done speaking, lower your hand. I will continue these reminders as we go through the agenda items to help keep all of us on track. The department recommends that the committee approve the proposed deferred maintenance projects, DMP priority list attached to the Superintendent Christina Kishimoto's memorandum on Attachment A two for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three fiscal biennial. Board Vice, Fig Vice Chair Bruce Boss.
Move to approve as recommended by the department.
Thank you. May I get a second? Keely Namau.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Keely. It has been moved by Vice, Fig Vice Chair Bruce Boss, and seconded by Board Member Keely Namau. We will now enter into discussion. I would like to make several comments before we start, and if the board, if the members could lower your hand, that'd be great. I would like to direct the committee's attention to the Superintendent's executive memo that briefly, some, memo that briefly summarizes the history of the subject matter, which in effect started last year on July nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, when the board started the process of establishing the policies and structures necessary to direct and enable the department to complete all facilities projects at its schools with the greatest socioeconomic and academic needs, as determined by a priority order intended to advance equity. In the ensuing months, various iterations of policy and priority was presented to the board. was presented to the board, but action deferred to allow the department to respond to questions from the committee. At the last meeting, action was again deferred to allow the department to make revisions based on the discussion and recommendations presented at the meeting. Therefore, the committee in its review is first tasked with ascertaining whether the recommendations made by the committee is reflected in the memo. And secondly, whether the priority list presented takes into account the socioeconomic and academic needs of each school's student population. The department memo includes information that will assist committee members in making informed decisions on the materials presented. The memo defines RNM as work to address normal wear which are routine and relatively low cost. This is an important distinction because it is the normal definition of RNM that is used and its costs are normally operating in nature. RNM was used in past presentations to include capital improvement program projects, which was confusing at best. Deferred Maintenance Project, VMPS, is new to the committee and conforms to the department's capitalization policy and is defined as major RNM projects which one, cost more than $100,000; two, extends the useful life of a building facility by 10 years or more. Now, both these costs and use, both cost and useful lives are the custom definition of capital projects. The third component of the definition is, is a qualified use of bond, bond funding. Now, this criteria for capitalization are not applicable since funding does not determine whether an asset is capitalized or not. State of Hawaii Department of Budget and Finance Memo number 19-03 with subject line General Obligation Taxes, Debt Bonds/Use of Bond Proceeds outlines what capital expenditures are eligible for tax exempt financing and what costs are not. The underlying point is that only capital expenditures are eligible. Therefore, the point is determining what is a capital expenditure determines funding and not the other way around. So the question that is posed is whether there was any DMPs that were classified solely based on this criterion. Now, another distinction that needs to be made to the committee members is deferred maintenance projects versus capital improvement program projects is defined in the department memo on action and recommendation concerning capital improvement projects budget for 2021-2023. But is relevant for the committee's discussion on the department's RNM priority list. CIP projects are distinguished from DMPs in that CIP projects represent new or additional space or major renovation of an existing structure. DMPs are largely, largely major replacements or repairs of existing components. The major difference is new projects versus existing structure. This information is important for committee members when discussing the RNM priority list and later the action item on committee improvement projects budgets. Now, I do have questions on the priority list, but I like to open up the discussion to the committee members and impose my questions at the end. So if there's any questions that you would like clarified on the priority list, please raise your hands so I can recognize you. Bruce member, Voss.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just start with a couple of questions. Randy, I want to thank you and your team for the additional information and clarification. I know you did a lot of work. And again, I appreciate your responding to the committee's concerns and comments at the last meeting. My question goes to your deferred maintenance projects list, which is attached to the memorandum. It's in alphabetical order, so it's not clear to me how those projects, all 168 million of them would be prioritized. That's in contrast to your memo on the CIP projects, which are labeled 1 through 38 in priority. So could you please explain to me how those projects on your list, the first list, the 168 million, would be prioritized if, as is certainly possible, the legislature doesn't appropriate the entire 168 million you're requesting?
Hello. Thank you very much, Chair Uemura and Vice Chair Voss. The prioritization of that 168 million is, comes in twofold. One is on a need basis and a timing basis. When we can, when we go through the process of getting them not only funded, permitting, and design. So that's one method of prioritization. A number of these projects are in the works. And that's the other prioritization, when it can come to fruition and the external forces that kind of dictate how that prioritization gets restacked. We can, on an ongoing basis, back to FIC, inform you on how those stacks are changing on a, on a regular basis to help everyone understand how these, these projects are moving along. They all kind of move along parallel roads, so to speak, depending on the degree of work being completed. So that's how it's stacked.
Thank you, Randy. It's important for FIC to be periodically updated, but I think it's more important when you go to the legislature with the department's budget proposal, that they're able to see the categories, the tranches, the priorities, so that they know, you know, what's going to be funded or done first. My other question before I defer to Chair and others is as to, on this list, there's some big chunks of monies that are just labeled miscellaneous RNM. And those are particularly at the intermediate schools and the high schools, two and $3 million chunks. Why are those categories that, why are those categorized that way rather than making clear what is being prioritized for, for the deferred maintenance?
So, so Vice Chair Voss, the multiplicity of these projects are bundled together. And that's how we, we stack them within that bundle. And it could be a number of different kinds of projects. It could be, I'm trying to find the right description. It's just a bundle of different kinds of works. And how would I describe this? It's, it's, it pulls, we pull it, it's multiple projects pulled from different lists of projects versus jobs. And, and part of it has to do with, with timing within that bundle that we can get, get completed. It's a, it's a convenient way of us to, to put all the projects in, in a bundle and continue to work on it as a bundle.
And Randy, I understand for convenience or practical reasons why it's done that way. But again, the legislature is going to want detailed information on everything. So what I would encourage you to break that out when you make your submittal to the legislature. I yield chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Voss. Are there any other comments from committee members? If so, would you please raise your hand? If not, then I will go ahead with my questions on the priority list. I see none, so I'm going to go ahead with my question. So Randy, if you could answer my first question, which is whether any DMPs were classified solely based on this criterion of funding?
No.
Okay, I would think not. I think that's part of one of, but yeah, like I mentioned, it shouldn't be based on funding, so. So thank you for that. So other questions on the priority list? What is the cost of the RNM projects that are considered normal and routine? Because these are, these are paid from operating funds, right? And these then will be subject to any budget reductions, correct?
Yeah, you know, Chair Uemura, it's, the tranche of projects are varied and wide and different. And sometimes when we go in and investigate what that project is, the magnitude of the project is much more in depth. You know, that's the, that's the best answer I can give you. I can get better definition from my team, but that's kind of how it's been, been, you know, from a maintenance facility, maintenance branch, and from a facility, what we call development branch, who fundamentally takes care of the bigger projects and falls on, development branch handles deferred maintenance projects and CIP. Our maintenance crew handles the day-to-day things, broken pipes, things of that nature.
Right. So just to make sure I understand, sir, that these basic normal RNM projects are repair maintenance, which you define in your memo, which, which is good, by the way. I think it was good to define the three separate categories. But I was concerned because now, you know, we're kind of excluding that RNM maintenance, no, repair maintenance cost, which is operating. And but I think what you're telling me right now is that you don't know exactly how much that is because it's included in the school's operating budget. So that means that then, you know, as we get, go on later, when we talk about the reduction to EDN 100, that's going to come and play for the schools, right? So the schools would be then looking at their RNM costs and say, well, I'm not going to, I'm going to cut that out. And my concern in that is that, you know, you know, there's any RNM that are considered compliance to health and safety and, and then that's, that's not meet the capitalization policy and that's why they consider RNM. That, that would be a serious concern for me because now, you know, it's RNM, yes, but it concerns health and safety and that may be cut from the budget. Is that, is my assumptions or concerns appropriate at this time? I mean, is that a concern?
I, I would tell you, no, it's, it's not. In the, the, it comes out of a budget called EDN 400.
Okay.
Falls in the development branch area and is handled by, I'm sorry, maintenance branch area, which is the team that we have throughout the islands. The neighbor islands is handled by, by DAGs with our participation. But that does not come out of the school's budget.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. But you know, then we still have to, we still have to recognize that EDN 400 later on in the operating budget is taking a big reduction as well. You know, that's for discussion on the operating budget, but thank you for answering that, Randy, and clearing, clearing that up. The other question I had is that can you explain briefly how the weighted score in Ruben was developed? And how it was applied to the list of outstanding DMPs? You know, sort of goes hand in hand with Vice Chair Voss's question.
So what, what we did was we, we worked with our team to establish a weighting and scoring system. And that weighting and scoring system is established through a number of priorities, part of which is the guidance that the, the board has given us to say, here's the priorities and how we want you to look at it. So we began to stack those priorities, put values to it and put a weighted amount to it. And when we do the numerics, it gives us, gives us a score of the project. And then we started stacking those scores. And some of those, like I said, are the, the board's priorities, building priorities, program priorities, a number of different sets that, that become critical to us valuing what the project priorities are. And that's how we built the Ruben.
So basically, I think you kind of built off the priority, CIP priority criteria, correct?
Absolutely.
You kind of use the same metrics for that. But you know, so, and I just wanted the committee to understand that, you know, in how you came about it and how you applied it. And so, you know, I do have some other questions as well, but thank you for that. So when I looked at your priority list and I looked at the projects by school and job name, when I looked at some of the description, you know, like CI, the, some of the descriptions could be CIP by definition, and I'll give you some examples. When you have various buildings to install ceiling fans, installs, you know, demolished buildings, install perimeter retaining wall, that sort of falls under the definition of CIP versus DMP. Or is there something, I mean, have you guys looked at that and said, look, we looked at it individually and decided that, no, it's, it's, there's a fine line between that and that it really should be a DMP? Because these are new stuff, right?
Yeah, there, there's going to be gray areas across these two lines. And I, I rely on our team to define for me and say, this is CIP and this is deferred maintenance. And, and your evaluation is, is very correct. Chair, it's, there's going to be a fine line that gets blurred a little bit. But I rely on the team to, to define that for me. And why they think this is a standalone project, whether this is an enhancement of an existing facility, and give me the rationale on why the money's going to come out of these budgets. So, so there is some, some flexibility that we have to look at and, and look at that gray area.
Okay. And, and that's fine, Randy. I think, you know, by, by including your definition of the three areas, you know, you have some rails, you know, which you can, you can take a look at this project. And if there's an exception, you can always ask for the reasons why. So I think, I think that's okay. And I think, so let me move on to the next one. You know, part of the, the new policy with the board policy, we talked about transparency and Vice Chair Voss touched on this as well. So because of the transparency part of the policy, where we want to make sure that the board and the public and the legislature knows exactly what we're asking for. Some of your detail needs, you need more detail. And these are the miscellaneous RNM that was brought up, campus miscellaneous repairs and structural, where you kind of lump, lump sum this thing. So my recommendation is we need to have that detailed out. Now, that's not going to stop us from approving the, the projects, but I think if we, if you, if we want you to follow the policy, then you need to do that. You cannot lump things together. And following that, Randy, you know, we talked about reserves, and you have an emergency reserve for 20 million. We talked about not having a reserve because the way you've done it in the past, minus the lump sum, so you have flexibility. So this, this reserve of 20 million should be allocated to projects. So the 168 million should be comprised of objects, not reserves. And, you know, taking, you know, taking another step on that, when you have facilities, asset management assessments for 10 million, I'm not sure what that is. Because if that's overhead and that's not assignable to a project, then according to the BNF memo that came out, then it's operating costs.
Yes, and, and we, we understand that. And I'll give you an example, a recent example with the, the rain that we've had. We've, we've had a number of roofs leak. And that's not a defined project and is beyond the scope of our maintenance team to re-roof. And I would, the, the team would not have funds to go fix that roof. So their, their comeback to me was, we need an emergency fund to fix that roof. Failure in electrical breakers. And that's, as best we can, we will define those, but those are But those are unanticipated and unforeseen emergency expenses.
But let me push back on you a little bit. I understand, I mean, you need funds in case something happens. But the way the funding is given to you guys and the flexibility, you can actually fund it to your, your basic lump sum funding, right? So you don't need a reserve.
Yes, what, what, so as we list out the projects and we appropriate the budget to it there, and when we reveal these documents to our schools, there's an expectation that we're going to move forward with that project that they have requested for in the, in the R and M arena. And I use another example of an electrical breaker that needed repair for almost three and a half years. And they always fell off the list of making the, the, the funding cut. I would have no, no capacity to fund, or we would not have the capacity to fund that particular project. That's a bit of a challenge for us.
Yeah, no, like I said, I understand, but you know, by having this reserve, it takes away from projects I would rather. Because if I'm looking at, I would just knock it off and say, you don't need the 20 million. Versus if you had allocated to a project, I'll be more inclined to say, yes, I think it's okay. You know what I'm saying? So I think you need to address that, you need to take a look at that. Because, you know, when you use terminology like miscellaneous and
Yep.
reserves, that's not, that's not descriptions that, when people look at that, they're inclined to accept that. So what about the facilities asset management, what is that?
I'm sorry?
Facilities asset management assessment for 10 million?
That, that is the, the consultants that we use to assess some of the projects that we're doing.
Okay, so.
That's the high-fit program.
Okay, so, so why can't this amounts be attached to a project? Even, even if you have to, you know, assume a percentage and say, based on past experience, you know that you're going to attach, you know, X percent. And so, so that, so that means that would increase the cost of a project. But that means you would then allocate the 10 million to a project.
I, um, you know, that's, that's not a bad way of appropriating the money because, no, I, let, let me work on that. I, I, I think that's, that's doable as opposed to, you know, applying it across the grouping of, of projects or, or schools that need the assessment.
Right.
That's not a bad idea. We, we can apply a 1% or a 2% to it.
Right.
That cost, yeah, that, that, that makes sense.
And then similarly, on your JOC design and CA services for 6 million. Yep, and you also have project management services for 5 million and then staff support for 1.7 million. I can see the 6 and the 5 million dollars should be attached to a project. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be a separate line item? Because these are costs that you're going to use for a project. And once you, you, you determine your project, you should be able to assign cost to that, even though it's an estimate. So similar to your facilities asset management assessment, these same costs should be assigned to projects. Okay, so if you could take a look at that, and then the staff support for 1.7 million, is that an overhead number?
Yes, it is.
Okay, then now overhead is not, is not eligible for funding, is an operating cost?
That, that's the 1, 1%.
What have been 1%?
That we would backcharge to the project.
So what you're saying is that this overhead then is related to a project?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so the similar explanation or recommendation is to go ahead and do those and assign it to project versus just leaving it as a separate line item? So let me move on because.
It's cleaner, it's cleaner.
Yeah. Well, and, and then you, you have a better chance of not having it knocked off your list. So the priority list for fiscal year 22, I guess, is 168 million. Where's the list for the 168 million for fiscal year 23? But you just gave us one list.
My staff has told me it's a little too soon. What, what we would like to do is come back to FIC on a quarterly basis. And like you said, spread out, give me the, the projects under miscellaneous and how we've applied that cost. Give me if you're going to have an emergency prop, project that needs funding. Tell me what that is and how much we're applying to it.
So, so are you, are you asking then the FIC to just approve of one year? Because we are proving of a priority list, we're not approving of a number for this, you know, fiscal year 23. You hear what I'm saying? We cannot approve of the two years, when you only give us one year of, on this of projects. We need to see two, two years. So the recommendation is then going to be that the committee is just going to approve one year of capital projects. Are you still there, Randy?
I'm sorry. So in the deck we provided to, to the FIC committee is a list of those projects. And, and then there's a deck of all the other things that are, that are in that stack.
The total, right, you have total 800, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we're not approving of the total, we are approving of a biennial list. So out of the 800, I think it was 899 million, something like that.
Yeah.
You took 168 and 168. So you identified the first priority list. So the question that I'm asking you is, what is the second list that comprises the 168 million?
We, we will provide that, that list too. We, we will, we, well, the team's prioritizing that second deck, that second year.
Okay, so when is the, when is the committee going to get that?
If you could allow me to go back to the team and, and give them the marching orders to get that to us as soon as possible.
Okay.
Because I, I understand what you're saying, you're trying to approve a, a biennial budget. We have a list for one year.
Right.
And, you know, you don't want that second deck open.
Yeah, and let me, let me ask the other committee members, you know, Vice Chair Boss and, and some of the other members to see what, if you have any concerns about that or, or comments.
Chair, this is Vice Chair Boss.
Yes.
I, I, I'm, I'm okay with Randy's suggestion because, at least in the interim, what's most important or what the legislature in particular is going to be focusing on is how the money is going to be used in the, in the first fiscal year of the biennium. And if Randy could come back to us with the details on the second year at, at the next quarterly FIC meeting, I think that would be appropriate yield.
Any other comments from committee members? So what, what I, what I'm getting is that basically the committee will approve the priority list for the fiscal year, the first fiscal year 22, I guess. And no, is that right? Yeah, fiscal year 21, yeah. The first year and that we're going to approve the 168. And that the facilities will then come back to the committee with the detail of that. Is that correct? Randy, is that what you are hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, and I'm going to call Chair Payne.
Yes, I just wanted clarification because I believe you said fiscal year 21, but we're in fiscal year 21 right now. So would we be approving fiscal year 22, which is July 1st? That's the budget we're talking about, right?
Yes, and you know, to be honest, I've had, I have in my notes fiscal year 22 when I said 21. And it is fiscal year 22, thank you, Chair. Any other question? Okay. So, so the final question I have for you, Randy, is what is the total amount of projects in progress that are included in the fiscal year 22 and that, and the fiscal year 23 lists, which you're going to provide to us later?
Twenty, the, there were 192 jobs for 22. And 23, I've, I've got to go back to, to my team on, on what that restack will, will look like. And we'll present those projects.
Yeah, so in the later, in the later operating budget, there was about 38 million dollars that are a lot of projects that are in progress. Does that relate? Doesn't relate to the R and M, you know, because your 168 should be embedded. I mean, the progress, projects in progress should have been embedded in the 168, correct?
You know, I've got a, I've got a recheck on that. I think that's next year's, right?
22.
Yeah, let, let me, let me get back to you on that, Chair.
Okay. Now, is there any other discussion on this? If not, if there's no further discussion, I believe we are ready to vote on the motion. I will now be taking a roll call vote. Committee members, wait until I call on you to unmute your microphone. Committee Vice Chairperson Bruce Boss.
Aye.
Committee Member Margaret Cox.
Aye.
Committee Member Lynn Fallon.
Aye.
Committee Member Kili Namau.
Aye.
Committee Member Catherine Payne.
Aye.
Committee Member Dwight Tekeno.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion has been adopted. Thank you very much. Next, we will have action on the Department of Education's priority criteria for executing capital improvement program projects in accordance with board policy 301-10 entitled equitable, equitable allocation of facilities resources. The memorandum with the recommendation is in the meeting materials. Again, Assistant Superintendent Tanaka is available to answer any question. Before we start discussing that this agenda item, I'd like to again remind committee members to raise your hands on your backs and wait for me to call on you before I'm muting your microphone. When you're done speaking, lower your hand. The department recommends that the committee approve the proposed CIP prioritization criteria attached to Superintendent Christina Kishmore memorandum as attachment B1. May I get a motion? Vice Chair Bruce, Bruce Boss.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Bruce. Board Member Dwight Tekeno.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Chair Bruce Boss and second by Board Member Dwight Tekeno. So we're going to enter into discussion. And I'd like to, as a reminder, the approval of the priority criteria for CIPs will form the basis for action item 3D. Committee action on the recommendation concerning the Department of Education's capital improvement project, improvement budget for the 2021-2023 fiscal biennium. What is important is how the department developed the criteria and how the criteria was applied to determine the capital improvements, projects budget. At the December 19, 2020 FIC meeting, there was concern that the committee formed to develop the criteria comprised of three engineers, two architects and one facilities manager. Missing was representation from the complex area level and school level leadership. And that the board would be approving of, of criteria with our key representation that we use to equitably allocate facilities resources. I've learned since the last meeting that the engineers, architects and facilities managers, all DOE employees and familiar with, with how the criterias should be enacted. And that the effort is ongoing to obtain feedback from TAS and school level principals. However, that information is not available and therefore not reflected in the criteria. I also know that the most of the recommendations through the prioritization criteria is reflected in the revised criteria. And many thanks to AS Tanaka to, for doing that and allowing us to meet with these people to discuss some of these issues that we had. So I would like to open the discussion to the commit, to the committee members. And please raise your hand if you have any comments or question. Vice Chair Bruce Boss.
Thank you, Chair. Again, Randy, thank you to you and your team, not just for the work you've done, but being responsive to the comments and concerns that were expressed at the last meeting. Following up on the chair's comments about the need to go out to the school level, the complex area and other stakeholders, including legislators. I want to be clear on this. While we are considering this for approval today, is it the, the department's view that based on that stakeholder input, that this may be just the initial prioritization criteria and that we, it will be amended and then presented to the committee for further review if in fact revisions are deemed appropriate? Is that right, Randy?
Absolutely. This will be an ongoing and recurring process. And I truly appreciate them put from Chair and Vice Chair to remind us on a regular basis that it should be part of our core response and building of our program. Absolutely.
Thank you, Randy. I mean, this is a work in progress, but it's an important work in progress. So as to this, at least initial prioritization criteria, was it applied then to get to the listing, 1 through 38, that is, that is listed under the CIP lump sum budget that the committee will be considering later today?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair, that's all the questions I have. Are you?
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. Any other comments from committee members? You raise your hand, I can recognize you. If there's no further discussion, I believe we are ready to vote on the motion. I will now be taking a roll call vote. Committee members, wait until I call on you to unmute your microphone. Committee Vice Chairperson Bruce Boss.
Aye.
Committee Member Margaret Cox.
Aye.
Committee Member Lynn Fallon.
Aye.
Committee Member Kili Namau.
Aye.
Committee Member Catherine Payne.
Aye.
Committee Member Dwight Tekeno.
Aye.
Thank you, committee members, the motion has been approved. And that, if, next, if there are no objections, I would like to take agenda item out of order. We will now take up agenda item 3D. Committee action on the recommendation concerning the Department of Education's capital improvement projects budget for the 2021-2023 fiscal biennium. The memorandum with, with the recommendation is in the meeting materials. Again, Assistant Superintendent Tanaka is available to answer any questions. Before we start discussing this agenda item, I'd like to again remind committee members to raise your hands on your backs and wait for me to call on you before I'm muting your microphone. When you're done speaking, lower your hand. The department recommends that the committee approve the proposed capital improvement budget, projects budget for the fiscal biennium 2021-2023 attached to Superintendent Christina Kishmore's memorandum as attachment D1 and D2. May I get a motion? to Superintendent Christina Kishmore's memorandum as attachment D one and D two. May I get a motion? Vice Chair Bruce Voss.
Move to approve, Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Dwight Tequeno.
Second.
It has been moved by Vic Vice Chair Voss and second by Board Member Dwight Tequeno. Just a few comments. The department is proposing an eight hundred five point six million capital improvement biennial budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three to cover eight areas of need. The committee has already taken action on deferred maintenance projects of a hundred and sixty-eight million for each of the fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three for a total of three hundred thirty-six million. The twenty, the remaining twenty eighty-seven million for fiscal year twenty-two and hundred eighty-two point six million for fiscal year twenty-three needs to be approved by the committee. Assumption is that if the priority criteria was approved by the committee under action three B and the criteria was applied as approved, then the list should be approved with one outstanding item. To be in compliance with board policy three oh one dash ten, the list needs to be transparent so that the details of the eight program categories should be made available to the, to the committee and public. I'm curious as to, as to if the max score was three hundred and eight and the highest score in the list was a hundred and fifty-two for Carnegie High School and the cutoff was ninety-four. It seems as though we should be doing projects in the high two-hundred-plus range. Either the criteria are too stringent or we don't have enough early projects to do. So I'm thinking is there, not the latter, but the initial one. And I think there's a lot of words of projects to do, but just, it's just an observation. Is the project completion of thirty-eight million for both years related to deferred maintenance projects? And I think that was answered by Randy. I don't see total projects beyond fiscal year twenty-three for health and safety and compliance. But I would think that the amounts would be larger than what is being reported. So the point here is that I don't know what the total health and safety compliant projects are, but it seems that the amounts that we are allocating to them in the next biennium seems, seems that it should be the larger. Randy, can you comment on that?
Thank you.
If you would.
The health and safety is, is, is a target that kind of moves on us a little bit. Part of it has to do with compliance issues. Part of it has to do with, with safety issues. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a moving target. And as we are applying these metrics to it this year and going forward, I will, I would ask that you give us some degree of flexibility and allow us to come back to you on a quarterly basis to see how these things are adjusting as we move through the projects during the year. We still confine our activity to the, the direction of the, the board and the superintendent. And, and we'll keep moving it forward. It's a little bit of a challenge in the first year in application of these metrics, but we expect, or I expect that deck is going to shift a little bit from a prioritization. The other, the other element is really the sense of urgency.
Yeah.
Activities have.
Yeah, Randy, I just want to make sure that, you know, when you look at ten million dollars for health and safety, I want to make sure that that ten million dollars is going to cover our needs for that, for that fiscal year and that, that our needs are not twenty million. We only allocated ten million to that. And I understand that, you know, every year you're going to have more projects coming on board, right? I think that's what you're saying. But I just, you know, I want to make sure that the ten million is an adequate number and that number should not be a higher number, same thing with compliance. And can you speak to that, that you feel comfortable that the ten million will cover all of the health and safety projects that, that is identifiable in those two years?
I would, I would tell you no.
Okay.
Some, some will be, we're working on through the deferred maintenance project. And I'll give you an example on compliance. Compliance is one that is, is of high concern because there is some liability associated with that. Handicap accessibility, wheelchair devices.
Right.
Grade separation issues. So we build a budget as best we can appropriate the funds that we see now, but those two areas are very critical for us, health and safety and compliance.
Yeah, and I think you, I think you're correct, Randy. I think some of those are included in your hundred sixty-eight million, right?
Yes.
So this, this ten and twenty-six, I guess by definition, these are really new projects, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That, that makes me feel a little better. So Randy, just, just, so that and another thing that we need to know to make sure is that that you need to be in compliance, same thing with the R and M, your deferred maintenance projects and the CIP, you need to be transparent. That's one of the things that we required in the board policy. So we need for you to break out those numbers for us, for the committee, and then for the public and for the legislature. Now, you can do this in a couple ways, and I would, I would suggest that you, you give us, you can report on that. As an IOU, and you can put that definitely on your website. So it's public knowledge. Can you do that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Committed to do that.
Okay, so um, I have, that's, that's all I have in terms of questions. So I'll take questions from the committee. Right, no, I'm sorry. Committee Member Lynn Fallon.
Thank you, Chair Lee Moore. Lynn Fallon. I, I, this is more a, more detailed question. Because there's so much need for use of IT and technology. When a school requires additional wiring and changes, what part of the budget would that be included in, in the CIP? Or is it?
Good question, Randy.
There is an allocation, just as a, a small example. There's an allocation in the bill and paging system that YTS, our technology folks are part of this CIP request. And that's five million per, per by, by, by year for the two years, five million each year. That's part of it. Part of the challenge is not all of these kinds of work, the technology work is allowed by the bond. That, that's part of the challenge. So we need to figure a, a different way to fund that. And, and my folks tell me that technology is only allowable if it's part of a new building or major renovation. So that's, that's a kind of limitation, but we do have, especially for the, the bill and paging replacements in the CIP budget.
So if, if you were to explore other funding possibilities, where would that be?
It would, it would have to come from the operating budget.
Even though it requires building modification?
Yeah, we need to look at the, the individual projects. You know, some of them, I'll be frank with you, is our electrical infrastructure. And that, you know, that has to be compliant before we install some of this other stuff. And that would fall under deferred maintenance budget.
So has there been any review and would it be the responsibility of your area to review the needs statewide for each of the schools in this area?
Probably comes from two areas, but primarily YTS, information technology branch.
And do you know if that kind of discussion is underway?
Most definitely. And I'll, I'll give you an example of the deaf and blind. We have to restore all those reader boards, so to speak, and, and YTS is the lead in that process.
Thank you, Chair. I yield.
Thank you, Member Fallon. Any other Vice Chair Bruce Voss?
Thank you, Chair. Randy, I, I have a question for you that I expect you'll hear from the legislature, so I want to hear. Have you practiced your answer now? Four, four of these projects on this list have very, very large dollar numbers. Sixty-four million for East Capule Elementary, thirty-one million for Oloa Elementary, fifty-eight million for the Farrington High Phase Two Master Plan, and thirty-five million for the Central Kitchen for West Oahu. Those kinds of numbers, Randy, are more than historically the Department of Education has been able to spend on a project in a year for various logistical design and construction reasons. So realistically, can the department expend all of those monies for those four large projects during fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
We will be making commitments towards it, the, the practical nature of expending those dollars. When we encumber the funds, we, we have three years to, to execute it. So that's how it, it looks at the bud, in the budget.
So can you give me? Again, the legislators are going to be concerned with for financial and economic reasons. You, you, we talked about the term shovel-ready before. And they're going to be wanting, wanting to fund projects that are ready now that can, can get up, you know, generate income, generate jobs to the community. So of those four very large projects, are they all ready to go now?
Farrington is nearly there. Capule, Capule, and the rest are pretty much in design, in different phases of design. So in, in the sense of shovel-ready, shovel-in-the-ground? No, in this, in the sense of planning, which has to come before we get to the shovel-in-the-ground, yes. Those projects are moving.
Understood, Randy. But, but again, to get, have the best chance at the legislature, I think you're going to need to be able or be, have to be prepared to explain to them if this money is appropriated in this fiscal year, understanding it's available for three years under, under the normal procedures. This is when we're going to start spending this money, you know, putting shovels in the ground and actually, you know, employing people and getting these facilities up. That's going to be a critical question. I yield, Chair.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much.
Sorry, I was on mute. Lynn, Member Lynn Fallon, you have a question, a comment? You have a hand up?
Sorry, Chair. I forgot to take it down.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I believe we are ready to vote on the motion. I will now be taking a roll call vote. Committee members, wait until I call on you to unmute your microphone. Committee Vice Chairperson Bruce Voss.
Aye.
Committee Member Margaret Cox.
Aye.
Committee Member Lynn Fallon.
Aye.
Committee Member Kili Namau.
Aye.
Committee Member Catherine Payne.
Aye.
Committee Member Dwight Tequeno.
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you. Finally, we have action on the Department of Education's operating budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three fiscal biennium. The memorandum with the recommendation is in the mini, meeting, meeting materials. We also have Brian Hallid, Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Fiscal Services, here to answer any questions. Before we start discussing this agenda item, I'd like to again remind committee members to raise your hands on webex and wait for me to call on you before I'm muting your microphone. When you're done speaking, lower your hand. The department recommends that the committee approve the proposed operating budget for fiscal year biennium twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three attached to Superintendent Christina Kishmore's memorandum as attachment D. May I get a motion? Board Chair Payne.
I approve that we approve the motion as stated.
Thank you. Any second. Boarder Dwight Tequeno.
Second the motion.
It has been moved by Board Chair Payne, second by Board Member Tequeno. We're now into discussion. Just wanted to make a few comments before we start discussion phase on this action item. Committee members, a timeline in which the board and the department have been working under for submitting the operating budget and CIP and R and, R and M requests to the governor has changed from December twenty-first to December fourth. The State Budget and Finance Office has indicated that they will be using the operating budget and CIP R and M list that is on the agenda today to include in the governor's budget. Tomorrow, December fourth, is the last day they will consider any submission of changes to the budgets. In effect, any significant changes suggested at today's meeting will not be incorporated in the budget submitted to the governor. How does this impact the review and approval process of the operating budget that we are undertaking at this meeting? This means that the public and the board are deprived of having any significant input into the budget submitted to the governor. The process in the development of the budget will continue as the budgets that will be included in the governor's budget to the legislature may undergo changes. And the legislative review of the budget will, as it happened in the past, require the department to address any adjustments to the budget. The FIP committee will not be able to fulfill its obligation under committee charter to approve of the DOE budgets prior to submitting to the governor's office. Our review today should focus on several things. Any recommended changes to the budget should be viewed as preparing the groundwork for contingency reduction plans that the department will have to prepare for. The ten percent reduction that is embedded in the operating plan may not be the reduction that the legislative body will be looking for. It may be more than ten percent. Members should focus on the process in which the budget was developed so that you can, you can be comfortable with the outcomes. Understanding the department's concern when preparing the department's budget are the concerns documented, the same concerns that you have? Are the concerns followed in the budget? The most significant concern stated is its capacity to continue to provide quality educational services to our students, including student services. Protect its core mission of teaching and learning to ensure equity for all students and to sustain essential functions to ensure student achievement during this period of declining state revenues while addressing learning loss resounding from COVID-nineteen health pandemic. Do the budget reductions follow these criteria when reductions are the same ten percent for schools and the state offices? State offices should be, in my opinion, absorbing more than the ten percent of the targeted cuts. Age eleven lists the critical errors to protect that members should be familiar with because this drives how the department determine the reductions to the operating budget. Members should review to see if they are in agreement or want to add other critical areas. This exercise will also drive any recommendations that you would like to see in the budget. Some other items in the budget memo of note that you should be aware of. The hundred point two million reoccurring reduction that was included in Act nine is, is reflected in the fiscal year twenty appropriation amount in attachment D. In other words, it's already been considered. The $99.9 million reduction to EDN 100, and, and which is the largest component of the $164 million reduction amount, the details of which will not be known until the end of December when schools complete the SY 2021, 22 staffing plans. The FY 2021 underfunded or unfunded needs of 95 or close to $96 million listed in Table 5 on page 10 of the memo is additive to the $164 million department reduction. The total number is rounded at $260 million. Attachment C is a detailed look at the state offices' budget and personnel and the budget reductions scenarios by program. The reduction goal is 10% of the budget. With the purpose of determining contingency reductions, members should be questioning as to how essential programs were determined and what is the value to the department. If the program is essential, what is the ability for the program to function as that less than 100% of capacity? I have other questions, and I do have some comments on contingency reductions, but I'd like to open up the discussions to the committee. And so if you raise your hand, then I can, I'll be able to recognize you. Vice Chair Voss?
Chair, I'll, I'll begin, and, and I do have a comment at the end of the meeting of following your comments that I'd like to make as well. My, my first question goes to special education. And Superintendent, first, I want to thank specifically the members of the complex areas and the principals that participated on your committees and all the work that they did. And I also want to thank you for the detailed transparency at the end of your submittal in terms of the effect on programs. I thought that was very well done. It's very hard to read, but well done. My, my question goes in student support services as to special education, regular schools, and the proposed $24.48 million cut. And again, I understand the proportionate amount that special education receives, but given the requirements that we have by law, is such a cut to special education even feasible and doable? And, and the department remains in compliance with law?
Thank you, Board Member Voss, for, for that question because I think that is absolutely hits at the heart of the, of the situation we're in. Throughout the process, and, and I won't stay in the big picture too long, but throughout the process, we've been asking ourselves, what are the things that not only are we legally required to do in terms of federal and state law, but also what is best for students? So it's not just staying at the legal requirement level. And when we were looking specifically at special education, Heidi Armstrong and her entire team, and then with input from principals and CASs, we had the hard conversation about whether this is even feasible. There is a certain amount of, of, of cut that we'll be able to sustain in short term without hitting on legal requirements per se. But at the same time, as we go through and look at the cuts at the school level balanced against what is being proposed in this pass-through money from the state to the school level, all of that is going to have to go through another level of review on whether we are, whether we are impacting what we are legally required to provide. As, as I've stated in the memo, and will reiterate very quickly here, the majority of our funds is directed at students or in schools. And so a cut of this level makes it very difficult not to touch upon services that are in the benefit of kids. And in special education, I do appreciate CX feedback as well. And everyone is at that table who understand, they understand why we're looking at cuts at this level at this point, but they also have our commitment that we will keep going back to this amount of the 24 million to see what we're going to potentially have to restore as we go through the iterative process of building out the final budget. So not a, not an absolute answer to, to you in your question, but certainly acknowledging that that is at the heart of, of the final budget as we go through the iterative process. Also, just, just as an offer for resource, AS Armstrong is also available as you go further, if you want specifics.
Thank you, Superintendent. Just one other question before I yield to other members' questions. As long as I've been paying attention to the DOE budget, one of the continuing refrains from the public is that the, that the DOE needs to cut the fat at the state office. I know you've heard that a lot. And rightly or wrongly, that perception has continued and continues to today. Could you please explain to the public what you and your committees did to try to improve efficiencies, transfer personnel, or other measures to try to make sure that as much as possible, this impacts of these budget cuts were not felt at the school level?
Thank you again for that great question. I will say, I will start by saying there is no way to avoid impacts at the, at the school level or, or for students not to feel these cuts because of the extent of the cut or the, the, how large these cuts are. But we did take on the role of looking at every single area in the state office with a look at several things. One is in attachment C, the public can see the office by office. We have seven offices at the state level, the office by office view, including the superintendent and deputy's office, which tends not, not to have many programs in it. But we did view every office to cut back to the extent possible without, without cutting into what is required of an SCA and an LEA. Those are legal terms for state education agency and local education agency. So those are things we cannot legally cut into. And also, but also looking at eliminating any vacant position, reviewing whether there are any teacher positions, which are questions we've gotten from the public. So I did provide that analysis. And you'll see in that analysis that the, the majority of what is still a fairly small number at the state level of teacher positions are in the service of schools. So we need teacher experts who are leading those services to the schools and to other teachers. But we provided that analysis so that you can see what is actually at the state level. We also looked at what modernizations are happening that we have to protect, which are centralized at the state level, such as the FMS, which we have no choice but to replace that system because we know it, it's at a crisis level with over, over 30 years old in terms of, of having needed to be replaced. And the final piece I wanted to mention, I just lost my train of thought in terms of, we did the state office teachers, their modernization, the, the other piece, yes, that we wanted to look at very carefully is what kind of contracted services we have that out of the state office and reached out to our partners that work with us to provide centralized services that extend our capacity to see where we can cut back on contracted services. So again, we put everything on the table, and we'll continue to have the discussion about that. 5% of the state's budget is centralized at the state office of centralized services. And so it, we are, in fact, noted by an external third party and also by the census review of as recently as 2018 as the smallest LEA/SEA in the nation. And so we do, in fact, prioritize funding to schools in this state, and I'm very proud of that. But we're still looking at Board Member Voss, if there are additional areas we can cut back. So we've cut back on travel, we've cut back on centralized professional development. We basically have cut ourselves back to what is required of an SCA/LEA entity in, under federal law.
Thank you, Superintendent. I yield, Chair.
All right, thank you. Board Member Margaret Cox?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things comes to mind, and I do thank you for all of this hard work that all of your members have put in to get this put together. And I know we're talking about state funding, but is, special ed is such a big concern. Is the, are the federal funds being cut also for special ed on top of our, what we're cutting for state?
No, Board Member Cox, thank you for asking that question because I do, I do think it's important to, for us to keep reiterating, the answer is no, the federal funds are not cut. In the state of Hawaii, we do rely heavily on, on additional state funding to support our state, our quality special education services that are necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. My next question has to do with early college, and you'll have to forgive me because I'm not really up on all of this budgeting thing. But, okay, so the, the funding that early college, and, and the reason I'm speaking about early college is so many people think that it's just looking at credits for kids. But basically, what early college is doing is it's changing how our communities are looking at their, their students about going on and getting more college work. So eventually, we're going to have a better educated workforce. So I'm really concerned community-wise when I look at this. So funding will be non-recurring. So the 1.5 million, my understanding is the non-recurring. And so the base money is 1 million. So of this 500,000 that's being cut, where, where is it coming from? And it, I guess my big concern is what happens to the small high schools that can't do the things that the large high schools? So where, is this 500,000 coming from the base? And we're saying we're not going to be asking for the 1.5 million from the ledge?
So I'm going to have Brian Hallett just explain where the monies are showing up here so you understand how it's showing up in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hi, this is Brian Hallett, Assistant Superintendent and CFO. This, this is an area that, that is going to require continued investigation. The budget for this program currently is $2.5 million, 1.5 of which has been deemed as non-recurring, meaning the expectation is that going into the next biennium, $1.5 million would be removed from the program. That would leave us with a base budget of $1 million. So when we see this $500,000 here on this, this table and page, on attachment C, what we're, what we are at this point, or preliminarily looking at is, is a possible $500,000 reduction to that $1 billion. We know this is problematic. We know this is something that needs further discussion. And, and what can that, what could half a million dollars provide for us? This is something that, that, as Chair Weemore was referring to earlier, this is going to be a long, ongoing conversation, and we know this will have impacts and compromise quality education, student achievement. But again, this is, none of this is, is what we want to do. This is what we are forced to do, and we look at where to provide the least harm with the $164 million worth of. I hope that, that answered your question, that, that, what, what the $500,000 reduction to early college would, would mean.
For early college is over 500,000 itself for one school. So when we're talking about moving from 2.5 million to 500,000, we're going to destroy this whole program. So I, I do think we need to really work on this a lot harder in the future. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
A member Lynn Fallon?
Thank you, Chair Weemore Lynn Fallon. I also want to acknowledge the work that went into going through this very painful process of having to make really tough choices. In, I just, this is a clarification and then a comment. In your memo, and then on page 14 of the memo related to the recommendations, I'm trying to understand exactly how many positions are cut because some of the testimony that we received indicated that it may be greater. I think there was a reference to 1,000 positions. In your memo, you say it's a deduct, there's a reduction of 102.5 FTE positions, 95.5 permanent and 7.0 temporary. Is that the total number of positions statewide for all DOE? Or is, are there additional positions that are in the 164, 164.3 million?
Thank you for the question, Board Member Fallon. The 102.5 positions that's noted in the memo is the work of central office cutback. So that's what we're cutting back centrally. The number of positions that we'll have and that, that we will potentially see coming from the school and complex level will be well over 1,000, 1,000 positions potentially, and, and there'll be a number of teacher positions potentially, very likely. And that's where you're hearing the testimony. We will know that exact amount and what the impact is on schools as the schools finish and complete, they have two more weeks to complete this, their school academic and financial plans. Those plans are reviewed by the school community councils at the school level, which includes various constituents. That then goes to the complex area, the complex area looks at that. And this year, we're adding a step because of the situation we're in to do an analysis of impact at the state level and to go back and, and conference with schools if necessary. And then I will be presenting not only to the board, but to the public, and will be part of our forums, public forums, the, the impact so that the public has a clear understanding of the total statewide and also per-school FTE impacts. And that, and that will be available for January. So we're still a little early on that for today's process. What you're seeing at today's budget proposal is a dollar amount for the budget, not the necessary FTE impact.
Thank you for clarifying. I yield.
Then, a member Tequeno?
Thank you, Chair. I acknowledge what my board members have stated to the department. This is going to be a huge and very uncomfortable undertaking and appreciate all the work that has been so far done. I think, you know, it's going to be a tough position that we have today because we have to, I guess, approve this proposed operating budget, you know, for '21 to '23 because of the timelines for the governor and the submission to the ledge. But I do agree with Assistant Superintendent Hallett that, you know, this has to be an ongoing, continuing conversation. Because, again, this report is just very high level. And we're going to get the devils of the details as the process continues. And in reflecting with, I guess, you know, Chair setting up, what we need to do as board members is, you know, review whether or not the processes are being followed, whether the outcomes are going to be acceptable, and basically, does it all fit within the core mission? And I think what I'd like to see is that we continue this conversation and we get more detailed information. So one of the things I would like to see is, you know, whenever you are making cuts, that it is justified, or if you're even saving programs, that it's, it's based upon accountability to meet the core mission of the department. And it should provide better explanations or more full, full explanations that's what's provided in this, these attachments here. Secondly, you know, we, we hear what measures were Secondly, you know, we hear what measures were taken towards looking at organizational efficiencies. But I think what I would like to see is a detailed and comprehensive report. I mean, each program would need to be reviewed and need to be justified if it will be continued or it will not take a cut. And I guess what also would be helpful is, you know, if we can see, like, information that was previously provided or requested from the department for other, you know, for previous biennial budgets. So we can actually do some comparison and take a look at what are the specific programs that are going to be truly impacted or, you know, further than just what's explained in the memo. So, you know, I guess it's difficult for, I think, all of us to make a, I guess, an analysis of what Chair Weemora has requested, in my view, because I don't think we have enough information as of this point. And with that, I just yield with my comments.
Thank you, a member. Any other comments from the committee members? Keely?
Aloha, Board Member Keely Namaou here. Just a couple of comments that I want to make. Thank you to the department for creating these attachments. It's very helpful for people like me who aren't very clear on a lot of these issues at times. It's much easier to read through and have a better understanding. So I appreciate that. I really, really appreciate that. What, I appreciate that Board Member Voss brought up the idea that I think the public really, really needs to understand because I do hear it all the time, that we're top-heavy, there's a lot of criticism about the central department. And again, people really have to understand that 5% of the entire school budget is maybe devoted to that group of people. And I have to share that they've been working really hard. I have to keep reminding people that we've been in a pandemic. And this department, the superintendent, her ASs and the CASs and all the principals have been working extremely hard since the end of March to provide whatever they could to help our students. The students have been number one. I apologize for the background noise. I've got construction going on at my house. And so I just want everyone to understand that. Please be cognizant of that, how hard people have been working. They've had to reinvent themselves many times over. They've had to pivot on so many issues, creating distance learning. And yes, it has not been completely perfect, but I've seen people work really, really hard. And so I want people to recognize that there's a reason why, and I was one of those people that, you know, coming from a neighbor island, sometimes you're always thinking like, what is, you know, it's so Honolulu-centric and you get frustrated because you think that you're on Maui, for example, for myself, and you're not getting what is needed. But sometimes you need to have these central people there to provide those things because sometimes they can do it much more efficiently and much more cost-effectively, especially like situations with computers. You know, purchasing 10,000 computers on behalf of the entire department, we're going to get a better price than if an individual school on Maui tries to purchase their 100 computers for their students. So please, people, I think you need to be aware of that. I think that they've been working really hard, and these attachments are really showing that they've been cutting away. So I encourage people to go to the website and check it out, that the central department has been trying to do that. In regards to the other 95% of the budget, which is really hard for us to, to speak to, because the schools themselves don't have their academic and financial plans available to any of us until the end of this month. And I do understand that for timeline purposes, the governor needs something from us. And so this is an exercise that we are all going through. But as Dwight had just shared, this does have to be an ongoing conversation and that we need to have this conversation for the next four months or four, five, six months as we deal with the legislature, with the legislators. And I am very heartened to hear the oral testimony that we received from Representative Capella today, that she feels that these are draconian measures. And I agree with her, these are draconian measures. And it is an exercise, and we have to do our due diligence. And so we're asking everybody to make these cuts. But we can't make these cuts. We cannot, in the long run, make these cuts because these cuts are talking about teachers in the classroom. And they're the most important people to our students. And if we want to get ahead in this economy and not be so dependent on the tourism and et cetera in the future, we need to invest in public education. We were at a deficit already from the beginning before the pandemic. And we, as a society and in Hawaii, need to invest in education. You should not be looking at the department to do these cuts. We have to figure out a better way. And, you know, COVID has given us these opportunities. We have to figure out a better way to make this different. How can we support education in a better way? And it needs all of us to do that. The legislators, the public, the business people, everyone has to take ownership of this and has to make their small sacrifices along the way. The teachers have to do that as well. I'm not saying that you need to, you know, I don't know what, I'm not used to union things and bargaining agreements and things like that. But everybody has to make these sacrifices. We all have to do our part. So column I, I just saying that, yeah, we got to approve a budget, I guess, or go through the motions today because these things are necessary. But I'm hopeful that we can still continue the dialogue. And I'm really looking forward to having the exchange with the public. I think it's vital that the public comes out and has an understanding what these impacts are going to have in our schools. We need to hear those details. I was very appreciative of Jay Kong, the principal from Keola Elementary School. Thank you. We need more of that. We need to hear that from every school, what it's going to look like at your school. What is it going to be like when you have to cut X amount of dollars from your budget? Because that's where the major impact is going to be coming from. It's from your budget. 95% of you schools out there, we need to hear from you. We need to know what's happening at your school level. And the public needs to know what exactly is happening at the school level in order for us to get through this. And I want the legislators to hear this because they're in control of our monies, and they need to understand this, what's happening, and do the best they can not to just maintain this. We need to do better than just to maintain. We need to do better. And because of COVID, these kids have suffered more and further. We have to do much, much more. I yield.
Board Member Cox?
Thank you, Chair. I really don't mean to be so argumentative, but what happens if we all vote no? I understand we have to have some cuts. I don't like a lot of the things that are listed as people have talked about before, how it's going to be affecting our school level. So that's my question. What happens if I'm voting no on this?
I think, Member Cox, this is my opinion as Chair. Because the budgets have already been submitted, or the BNF has already taken the budgets off our agenda, what we are doing today, if there is no significant corrections to the budget, then it's okay because we'll be approving the budget according to our charter. But because the budget has been already accepted or taken, if the board, to me, if the committee decides not to take it out of committee and not recommend action approval, then it doesn't matter because the governor already has our budget. But what we're looking for, I think, is the continued dialogue that many members have expressed, and it will happen in the legislature. And that's where I think we need to make a case as far as reductions and whatnot. But I think it's important for us as a board to understand where the reductions are and how, and how we can address this because the reductions are deep. And as Superintendent had mentioned before, $102 million was taken by Act 9, and $35 million of that went directly to the schools as a cut. So you're looking at a $135 million cut. So, you know, these are big cuts, and there's no way that realistically we can be able to absorb any of this and not impact the schools. But what we have to do is minimize the impact. So to answer your question, a member Cox, if this doesn't get out of committee, in my opinion, it doesn't matter. But I'm going to ask Bruce Voss as a legal mind to play in on this. So Bruce?
Thank you, Chair. I want to answer Maggie's question, but then echo Keely. By statute, by law, the board does have the obligation to approve a budget, whether we like it or not. And I don't like it, and none of the members here like what has been presented to us. But I want to be clear, and now I'm going to echo Keely. This is just the first step, the very first step. All final budget decisions are made by the legislature, we know that. And the reality is, is that with this kind of huge state budget shortfall, every dollar saved for education is a dollar cut from somewhere else where it's needed. So we have the responsibility, all of us, and I mean all of us, to go to the legislature, to work with legislators, to help them understand why preserving funds for classroom instruction and special education has to be the top priority this legislative session. And if we don't do that, all of us, if we don't make the case to the legislature, then we got nobody to blame but ourselves. I yield to you.
Thank you, I share. Maggie, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I'm just unhappy, but thank you for answering.
Yeah, thank you, Maggie. I think we're all unhappy, but it's the reality of what needs to be done. And like Vice Chair Voss has stated, and during our discussions with the superintendent and Brian, it is just the first step. So there is, you know, but the first step may lead to further reduction. So we all have to be aware of that. But, and I echo Vice Chair Voss's concerns, that we all have to do our parts. And by having to understand the budgets, we can make a better case to the legislatures. So this is probably the first year, I think, that we have the sort of the information that we've gotten, that now we're able to talk to them intelligently. So what I'd like to do is see if there's anybody else that has any questions. And Maggie, your hand is still up, so I'm not sure if you have still comments or questions on this. Maggie? I'm going to assume that she doesn't have any. And I just wanted to, and I apologize to the committee. I wanted to ask some questions that the Sata would land, this kind of outside question that how the budget, it affects the budget. So one of the questions I had was, you know, how is the federal funding for COVID affect budget reductions? You know, one of the questions that come up is, well, you had CARES money that came in, so doesn't that offset your reduction amount? So I would ask that if CFO Brian Hallett could address that question?
Thank you, Cherry Weemora. Let me start by saying that a detailed listing of how the $43 million in CARE funding that has come in, as well as the $31 million for devices that the governor authorized, the $2 million for air purifiers, and the $24 million for unemployment insurance, there's a detailed listing of that on our department's budget website. Those federal funds have been tremendously helpful to address the conditions that have arisen as a result of this pandemic. Those are essentially one-time funding. The three expenses that I mentioned that were authorized through the governor's assistance or with the governor's assistance and support, those funds run out at the end of this month. The $43 million, much of which, most of which has already been expended, and it's, as I mentioned, is detailed, those have been used for expenses such as summer school, for immediate health and safety, those sort of responses, immediate responses that were needed. So it's not dollars that we can count on to assist. They're not recurring dollars. They're not, they're not going to be available to us in significant amounts in the biennial period in which we're discussing today.
Yeah, and Brian, is it correct to assume that these CARES money was used to really cover extraordinary expenses that's not in your base operating budget, right?
Yes, these were for new expenses that arose as a result of the pandemic. And that was the condition of the award of the federal funds, the purpose for which they were provided.
So Brian, just stay on. I got other questions that I think you can answer pretty quickly. How much were the savings that was achieved when the schools were not open due to the pandemic? Because we had savings in transportation, food service, utilities and other. Were these savings part of the $100.2 million, or is that aside from that?
Exactly. Those were the savings that were taken into consideration when that $100 million one-time reduction was put forth. We were watching spending on bus, on casual hires, hires or staffing that was not on campus, which incidentally is what's spiking our unemployment insurance expenses in this year.
Right. So sort of transportation, food service, utilities, and some of the other things. So it was all kind of rolled into that $100.2 million?
Yes. And that was the conversation with the legislature at the time was, they were asking, where are you saving?
Right, right.
That's what we came forth with.
Okay, okay. Let me just move on because when you guys did, and by the way, your Exhibit C, the office, that was a really good job that you guys did. And because, you know, because we don't have the detail for the schools, and we focus on that, but you folks did a really good job of kind of listing some of the impacts. But I do have questions on that later. But, so when you looked at the staff office reductions, did you consider the possible impact of COVID safety protocols? Because, and one of us, you know, the bus routes and, you know, the frequency of that, you know, was that, was the COVID safety precaution protocol considered when you guys recommended those reductions?
So the process involved each of the state offices looking at their operations. So I would suggest the answer would be yes. Yes, it was.
Okay.
But again, or maybe not again, one of the underlying challenges in budgeting is dealing with the unknowns. We're talking about a budget that would be implemented six, seven months from now, going on for the next two years. Conditions will change, and that's part of the requirement of the need for these ongoing conversations.
Right, right. So let me ask you on collections of the Medicare reimbursement. Because the sense is that because there was a push to get more people to sign forms, is that collections up this year or in the next two years, you think? is that collections up this year or in the next two years, you think?
I would defer to Heidi on that. Those Medicaid dollars, though, while she is pulled up, would be used to help assist our SPED programs that are having contract costs. Historically, that's what those dollars have been.
Yeah, so any increase in those dollars will help to offset possible reduction to the SPED programs, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if Heidi can answer that, I mean, at least we would have some kind of dollar figure in our head.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon. This is Heidi. Good afternoon, Chair Uimura and board. Yes, the Medicaid dollars, that is an allowable use of the Medicaid dollars. And Superintendent has the final say of what those dollars shall be used for, but it is an allowable use.
But what is the dollars collected? Because I understand it went up from the previous years that you reported.
To date, it's a little over 1 million, I think 1.2 million. However, the revenue generated this year has been lower due to the impacts of COVID and not as many students attending school and
Right.
the services.
Yeah, so going forward is what you're saying, the 1.2 was pretty much prior. You know, it's catching up, so going forward, you expect that to drop just because of the numbers of students, right?
Correct, over eight health, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Heidi. I just want to move quickly because we want to kind of get to this. So I want to get, I want to get to the point for the board members. And like I said, I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. But the possible contingency reductions that we need to look at is what is not reflected in the budget. And the personnel and department reorganization and consolidation is not included in that. So, you know, that's the possible areas that we can reduce. Of course, the furloughs have been banded about with the unions and tiered salary reductions. And then some of the contingency reductions, you know, and I don't know, and you guys know better, Brian, how this would work. But, you know, I would look to see if we can shift 1% to 2% from the 10% reduction to EBM for the state office, but, you know, that's a big amount. That's $20 million in additional reductions. But that's just switching from one area to the next. But alternatively, I would like to see, you know, like a 1% shift for the state office and then reduce state office by additional 10. So you get an additional $10 million reduction. But like I said, you know, the details, you guys are very embedded in that. So it's easy for us to come up and say, well, why don't you do this and why don't you do that? But it's just sort of a, you know, the thought process, I want, I want to make sure that it's out there and you guys are looking at that. And one of the things is Act 72, the school facilities agency impact the facility's operation. Because we do know that it was passed in 20 days prior to the convening of the regular session, that you have to identify positions of the department that's in the facilities that would be transferred to the school facility agency. So, you know, that's an area of savings, of cost reductions that you can throw into your pot as far as how much we can, you know, savings we can in case we have additional the reduction requirement is at more than 10%. But I thank you guys. I think you guys did a, you know, good job of providing detail. It's not an easy job, as we heard from testimony and from the committee members. But, you know, the reality of all this is, we really got a the public, as Keely so aptly put it, the public has to understand this is not something we want to do. We have to have the education in the forefront. And we, as board members, have to do our part and talk to our legislator and let her know how important this is. So is there any other comments from the committee members? Lynn Fallon?
Thank you, Chair Uimura. Lynn Fallon. This is just to underscore what other members have stated and the superintendent, that in our efforts to do our best to minimize impact at the school level, those in the community and the parents are going to want to know specifically, more specifically, how does it affect my child? How does it affect my student? So I really encourage, as the department is planning its outreach and detailing the exact impact to the schools, that it's done thoughtfully and in a very planned and coordinated fashion. Because the public needs to know and parents need to know and school communities need to know exactly what's at stake in terms of dollars, in terms of positions, and so forth. So I encourage that part of the process to be done and in a time, as timely a way as possible and as detailed and meaningfully as possible. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, member Lynn Fallon. Is there any other comments? If there is no further discussion, I believe you are ready to vote on the motion. I will now be taking a real call vote. Committee members, wait until a call on you to unmute your microphone. Committee Vice Chairperson Bruce Voss?
With reservations, aye.
Committee Member Margaret Cox?
A very reluctant aye.
Committee Member Lynn Fallon?
Aye.
Committee Member Keely Namao?
With reservations, aye.
Committee Member Catherine Payne?
With reservations, aye.
Committee Member Dwight Takano?
With reservations, aye.
The motions that has been passed with five yeses with reservations. Thank you. With no other agenda items, because Agenda Item D was taken earlier, I am now adjourning the meeting as of 1:18 PM. Thank you.